Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock and I'm calling this meeting of the...
Seven thirty.
Oh, seven thirty. Thank you. It is seven thirty. But we're on time. And I call this meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. If we could have a roll call, Michelle?
Here.
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 Okay, thank you. Next is to approve the agenda if there are no amendments.
The chair motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second. Kevin, all in favor to approve the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the approval of the minutes.
I can leave them posted.
The minutes.
Are they on the wall? Say aye.
Yeah, and these minutes are from a meeting that we were just to approve the minutes from the meeting previous.
They are.
In a elect...
When we had the election of officers.
Will they be on the please?
June four.
So are there any corrections to the minutes?
No.
They're very, very brief. If there are no corrections, the motion would be in order to approve the minutes from our last meeting of June fourth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June fourth.
Jim?
Second.
Ken, second. All in favor of approving the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So next, we have a public hearing. And it's on the Rabbit, Romeo Rabbit Rescue on two one eight five oh McFall Road. And what this is, is an opportunity for the public to speak and for us to gather information so that we can make an appropriate decision. The public hearing is on a variance request from a required paved driveway and parking area. That is section six oh three of the Armada Township zoning ordinance. So we're going to open the public hearing. Everyone will have an opportunity to speak. We'll have you come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record and so we can hear you with the microphone. And after the public hearing, we will close the public hearing. And then our first item on our agenda is new business is Romeo Rabbit Rescue where we'll make our deliberation and our decision on the requested variance. So it is now, let me get this right. Seven thirty-three, I have like a motion to open the public hearing on Romeo Rabbit Rescue.
Some move.
Ken and Jim, all in favor of opening a public hearing at seven thirty-three, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. So usually what we do is we could have the applicant just kind of speak a few words of why you're requesting the variance and then we'll open it up to the public.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Robin Silas. I'm the owner of the property. It's my wife's rescue, Romeo Rabbit Rescue. So we've been spending some time on this with the township, kind of going through it. And with the help of Chris and Michelle, kind of reviewing all the compliance issues. So as far as I can tell from the site plan and everything we've done so far, everything is in compliance. This variance would fit into the compliance that has already been reviewed with the site plan. The McComb County Township Road Commission issued a permit to us for the culvert. That permit actually was with a gravel off-ramp into the driveway, so they are requiring gravel from McComb County. All the properties around us are all gravel, so it would be in compliance. Boarding was removed from the site plan, so the requirement is coming from the ADA that requires concrete. That's where the requirement was coming from. But boarding is not there. So since boarding has been removed, the site plan was also approved with the gravel driveway in it. So I think we've checked all the boxes for what's required to have the variance for the gravel driveway. Any questions that we have to answer?
Thank you. I should review. You currently have a approved site plan from the planning commission based on receiving this variance and the permission from the road commission. And you also have a recommendation from the planning commission, which is a recommendation to the township board for your special approval for the operation. That is up to the board, which their meeting is next week.
Correct.
So as of right now, you do have approved site plan contingent upon this, so that is... And the other thing is, we did, I forgot to note, that we did notice all the surrounding property owners and publishes in the paper records, so that's procedural thing.
Correct.
But, so you do have a permit from the road commission for that culvert as of now?
Correct. And they specifically said it had to be gravel from McComb County.
Okay.
Yeah. So I think we've checked everything. And last week, planning had done a unanimous approval on the site plan as well. So so far, we've gotten everything checked out with a yes until we keep your blessing.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we do have to go through the formality.
Correct, yeah.
Because variances are, you know, it's you're basically kind of getting a variance from the zoning ordinance and we have to explain the reasons why we're granting or denying a variance.
Correct, correct. And we looked at the surrounding area. We know SEMCO got a variance as well. And we just wanted to make sure we were doing everything the right way this time. And so far, I think we're on track.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I'd be happy answering the question. Thank you very much.
Okay. Open this up to the public. Are there any public comments on the variance for the gravel driveway and parking area?
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Tracy Jones. Me and my husband Chad live at two one seven seven zero McFall Road up there in Armada. We are just the property west of the Silases. It's a little different because our property used to be ten acres and they took one acre of it and that's kind of carved out for another house in between us, but the majority of the property line is ours. I was just coming up here and support, me and my husband are in support of a gravel drive for them, for the Rabbit Rescue. Like you said, the surrounding properties all have gravel driveways. The road is gravel. I think it would fit perfectly with our scene and how our community is currently.
Okay.
So sorry about that.
Thank you very much, Tracy.
Do you want me to write this information? There's not a pen up here.
No, if you got, are you keeping up?
I got it. You got it?
Yeah. As long as we keep the meeting under control, Michelle can catch it. Are there any other public comments? Okay, well, we did receive one email. I believe this is from another, well, this is John DePa on Erwin Road. "Please let this email be read at the upcoming hearing on September tenth. I am opposed to the variance being sought at two one eight five oh McFall Road. In my estimation, there are places to conduct business in the village of Armada and there are places for agriculture and farming outside of the village. It is a slippery slope to begin mixing the two. We farmers do not want business or nonprofits coming into agricultural areas and requesting variances to essentially turn their corner of the farmland into what was not proposed for. Likewise, I hope the board would be leery of granting a farmer the right to till vacant land within the village limits. The village of Armada does not want tractors and combines jamming their streets. And farmers do not want businesses or nonprofits infiltrating our farmland. If the board allows the Rabbit Rescue to exist, they have already gone against the wishes of the many to placate the desires of a few. Please do not compound that by letting them be excused from paving their driveway and parking lot. Please note my opposition. In closing, perhaps, rather than trying to make their operation somehow blend with the surrounding farms and trying to secure numerous variances to allow it to occur, maybe they could rent space in Armada or Romeo to conduct their operations. Problem solved. Thank you for your attention to this matter." Okay, so that was the only letter, email, okay. Any other public comments? Okay. Does the board have any comments? Or do you want to save that for the deliberation or question?
Yeah, I'll save that for...
Pardon?
I'll save it till we're new business.
Okay, if there are no more public comments, it is now seven forty and we will close the public hearing. We have a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to close at seven forty.
Okay, and...
I'll second.
Kevin, all in favor of closing the public hearing at seven forty, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so now that brings us to our new business, which is the Romeo Rescue. So what they need, according to our ordinance, section six oh three E, it says, "The entire parking area, including parking spaces, maneuvering lanes and drives required under this section shall be provided with asphalt or concrete surfacing unless a waiver is granted by the Board of Appeals for a specified period of time. Areas using a secondary parking areas above this that are intended for storage may be gravel." That's your secondary parking areas. So the board is well within their rights to go through this and grant a variance if we feel that our standards have been met. And the standards for a variance are, we have five standards. The first is how the strict enforcement of the provisions of the township zoning ordinance would cause practical difficulty and deprive the owner of rights enjoyed by all other property owners owning property within the same zoning district. So there we have gravel. We'll keep the community common and maintain community standards is the applicant's answer to that. And I think what we've determined is that we do have a gravel road with all the other owners having gravel driveways. And from the planning commission, we've determined that this is going to be a very low use amount of traffic. So there's maybe an adoption or two a month and there's a couple employees that may be there. So it is, it is a pretty low use. So we're looking at, you know, in this practical difficulty. You know, we're asking one person to have a paved driveway and parking area where the rest of the neighbors do not. Any comments from the board regarding that requirement?
No.
Ken?
Difference is, we're talking about a business, not a residential place.
Correct.
So to me, there's a difference there. And the only hardship I see happening is financial, but there's business loans. Even the county planning department has a small business department to help small businesses develop and build in that. And I haven't heard that they tried to see about getting low interest loans or something through there. And as far as the driveway, township doesn't have control over the road right away. That's the county road department.
Yeah.
What goes on after that inward is up to the regulations of the township.
Correct. They do have the, like I say, a waiver from the Department of Roads for that approach and that. So we're seeing that...
I don't know what the waivers for, because the road department determines what goes there.
Right.
So township has nothing to say about that.
No, they're saying from the road department of roads that they have a permit for the culvert.
Right.
And with the gravel over it, so that...
That's to their specifications.
Right.
Now, if McFall would have been paved, that could be a different story. But that's, again, the road department's decision.
I...
Jim?
Generally agree, I agree with your logic, Ken. As far as the zoning, it is, as far as the zoning district and that property is adjacent to this property, aside from the business. So as stated previously by DJ, it's gone through planning, but it has not been approved by the board currently, you know, yet. Potentially will be, but if the board allows the special land use, to me, now it's in the same zoning district, so your question, you're kind of blending the two. If the board allows planning, allows this business to be there, I guess my opinion is the driveways are adjacent to it, are, can be aggregate, the road's aggregate. I think it would, it'd actually blend in more now for specifically talking about hardship. Ken's right, it's financial in some sense, but I think that it's consistent with the adjacent properties if we allow aggregates. I guess that's where I see it as acceptable or consistent.
And we don't, they don't have to show a hardship. It's just, it says would cause practical difficulty.
Okay.
To me, that hasn't been shown, so...
Okay, so they're a little gray on that one. Okay. Kevin, you have any comments on the...
I was just gonna echo the points brought up by Jim.
Yeah, I mean, if this were a full-blown business, I mean, it is a business, but it's a low, low volume. And it's a business that is kind of, in my opinion, an ag-related business. Because it is animals. It's not a, it's not a, you know, it's not like a party store or, you know, even a, you know, some kind of a market or any kind of sales. It's just, you know, it's an ag-related business.
So what are they raising the rabbits for?
We can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. It's a rescue. It's a not, yeah, they're a nonprofit and they're rescuing rabbits. It's not, it's not a for-profit business, so it's a little bit unique.
It's not a breeding operation.
Right, yeah, they're not breeding, they're rescuing.
And I guess even if it is, I actually feel the same way as DJ, as far as it is kind of ag-based. There's cattle farmers or ag, you know, farmers that they don't have to pave their driveway and they probably don't want to for multiple reasons, but I would say it is consistent on that line of thinking.
The special land use that we're recommending to the board was strictly for adopting and rescuing. There was no boarding or raising type of operation, so it's a nonprofit. It's not a for-profit type business.
So what happens with the rabbits that they rescue?
They have to find homes for them.
Okay, so to me, that's not ag-related because, like Jim mentioned about cattle and farms and that, they either raise the cattle for food, butchering and that, or sell it to be butchered and that to somebody else. And that's the business, but it's also agriculture.
Agriculture is for profit.
Because agriculture tries to make a profit and there's, yeah, you know, I don't tell me. I knew about that, but this is my opinion. They haven't shown that they couldn't get the money and funds to do it according to township requirements.
Okay. Well, I mean, we did just read here that it says that this, unless a waiver is granted by the Board of Appeals, this is intended, I know we're in the township, we're trying to do more, you know, less impervious surfaces and in fact, the ordinance is under a rewrite and there's going to be some changes to the section that the planners told me about where we have specific, just specific uses where we ask for the hard surfacing. So this is something that's probably going to be changing, but we're kind of in a transition period. The zoning ordinance isn't ready. And, but it's written, the way it's written is like, you know, we do have waivers in there for different farm operations, you know, for the value added, but this one is not specifically mentioned, but the fact that it's, you know, animal operation and it's a low-volume business, you know, type of business, it doesn't seem where there's any advantage to the township to ask for the pavement. So I mean, the practical difficulties, why would you pave something that's off of a gravel road when you don't need it? To me, that's the difficulty of paving something that's, when you don't really need the paving.
There's no set precedent of how much traffic they will be producing. So if you grant the variance and then all of a sudden, the traffic picks up, are you gonna get them back in?
That's a good point.
So that's just my opinion.
Okay. Well, it looks like we've got three people on this side and... So I...
Are you gonna call a vote now or are you gonna go through the rest of the process?
We're gonna go through them. Yeah, we gotta go through each one.
Well, so I would say, just briefly, as far as the requirement for pavement, DJ, maybe you can speak into this. What is the general intention? I would assume a lot of it has to do with, you know, tracking ag aggregate onto a road surface, particularly if it's a paved road where you have to worry, you'd worry more of that and dust if there's a lot of vehicles. But, and Ken, you mentioned, we don't know how many vehicles. We're led to believe it will be few, very few. And being on a gravel road, there's less of a concern of like tracking, you know.
Okay. Well, let's move on to two. We'll circle back to that. Number two, the conditions and circumstances unique to the property which are not similarly applicable to other properties in the same zoning district, and the applicant responds, "All community standards are maintained with gravel driveways." Assuming because that's the norm for that area is that all the driveways are gravel and the road is gravel.
So, but what conditions are unique in this case? Or maybe I'm misunderstanding the point.
Yeah, this one's a little tricky. Usually a variance, you know, there's a uniqueness to the property and a variance is required for it in order just to, you know, to do something with the property.
I guess the second half of the point says, "Which are not similarly applicable to other properties." So it is saying, this property, being on a gravel road, I guess makes it unique in some regards, but similarly unique to like businesses. I mean, they referenced SEMCO where we allowed them to have, and now they have less traffic, I'm guessing, but we allowed an ag driveway in that case because there's so little traffic in that property.
Yeah, I mean, all the other properties in the district do have gravel. If you add somebody paved driveway, that would make them stand out. They would be, it would be kind of uncalled.
I got you. I agree with that. I think it will stand out more. And that is a concern of mine in general, so...
Yeah, I mean, to, I mean, keeping the similarity with the other properties makes more sense off of a gravel road. But anybody else have any comments on the... Nope, okay. "The conditions and circumstances unique to the property were not created by the owner or the predecessor entitled within the time following the effective date of the provisions alleged to adversely affect such property. There are no conditions, this is the applicant, there are no conditions unique. We are just maintaining the common gravel driveways." This is a bit different because some of these don't specifically apply to the type of variance that they're seeking. They're just trying to maintain the status quo with the neighborhood where they're basically...
Like a dimensional variance.
There's not a reason to put in a paved driveway and parking for such a low use. Any comments on condition three?
I agree. It's not entirely applicable to this request.
It just to be more of a used driveway than the residence. Because you got people coming to work, like they said, people coming to take care of the rabbits or dropping rabbits off or looking to see what's there and possibly pick up rabbits. So that's, that's different than what's going on in the neighborhood.
Right. But like I said, it's supposed to be low use. This is just a very unique one, this variance, because the five standards don't necessarily apply to this kind of situation where it's specifically mentioned in the ordinance that, you know, we can grant a waiver for these types of things because this is, the fact that requiring concrete is kind of a pretty strict requirement. And it's obviously intended for larger scale operations or businesses or off of our main paved roads. And here, we have a very small operation with very low use, similar to the SEMCO. And to require the pavement is, it's not practical. So that's more the angle we're going for, rather than trying to squeeze them in to fit the letter of all the requirements. Like number four, this requested variance will not confer special privileges that are denied other properties similarly situated in the same zoning district. And the applicant responds, "The request will not disturb any community standards. It will meet all standards." I don't know if I'm reading that right.
I think I might say keep all standards.
Yeah, but this isn't a request to give somebody something over and above that other people don't have. This is just keeping, like I say, the status quo.
Keeping it uniform.
Yeah, keeping it uniform with all the other properties. The more we start paving and making it into a business and now we've got something that's gonna, could grow into something bigger, whereas if it's kept more, you know, similar to the rest of the neighborhood, it's gonna be less of a impact on any of the surrounding properties. Any comments on...
So how keeping it gravel is gonna keep it from growing?
No, it's just gonna keep it similar to the other properties. If you start putting a paved parking lot and a paved driveway, now you've got something that stands out like a business and it looks different than everything else. Whereas you keep it gravel, now you've got something that's, you know, looks like everything else in the neighborhood. It's not, it's gonna, it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna blend in with the neighborhood. Which is, you know, what you're trying to do is not give them any special privileges. And by not having them paved, it doesn't, we're not giving them any kind of special privilege that anyone else in the neighborhood is being denied.
Well, the thing is, there is no other business in the neighborhood. To me, if we're comparing it to SEMCO, SEMCO would have way less traffic because they're not inviting the public in to pick up rabbits or help coming in to daily to maintain things and that. SEMCO is, to me, way less, way less traffic than even the residents.
Well, the way the world is right now, I'd say some houses have more delivery trucks every day than this, you know.
Could be.
So in that regard. And there's, there are plenty of homes with paved driveways, to your point. But there are a few properties that I see, you know, near my house that have a paved parking lot. Look to them and a barn up front and they definitely stand out. So that's why, so far, I agree with DJ's comment that if by paving this, it would make it stand out as a parking lot, you know, and look more like a business, which it's not a residential property. I mean, it's clearly, and I know it's a nonprofit, but it's clearly more than just a home. And there's a few more vehicles, is what we understand, but it's still, from a neighborhood perspective, I think there's, there are a lot of homes that, a lot of properties that have home-based businesses, whether they should or not, you know, gravel haulers. We have home mechanics and they have gravel driveways and they have traffic, you know, semis coming in every day because they're driving gravel haulers and stuff like that, whereas I would see them as likely more of an impact to the neighbors than what it appears this will be. I don't know if that's helpful or not, but it's...
Yeah. Well, the last requirement is that the requested variance will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. And, you know, the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance is just to protect all the, all residents and make sure that, you know, we can all live in harmony here, that no one's getting any special treatment, special privileges and being able to do things that other residents are not allowed to do. You know, this is unique. They're not really asking for something over and above. They just want to keep it the way it is. So, you know, I don't see where we're being contrary to the spirit of the ordinance.
Clearly, the ZBA exists because as much as we want to be consistent, and that's, I think we're, Ken... Clearly, the ZBA exists because as much as we wanna be consistent and that's, I think we're Ken's going for, that's not always appropriate and so I think that's where this comes in, as far as the spirit of the ordinance, we're we're still meeting the spirit of the ordinance, I believe, even if we allow gravel driveway in this case.
Okay, and like I said, I can just say that, you know, we are working on the ordinance and this is probably gonna be changing to be where we're not gonna have such a strict requirement that everything has to be paved. We're gonna be trying to, you know, in areas where it's suitable that we have less impervious services, less runoff and that's kind of gonna be the the thrust of the, of the new ordinance, but like I say, we're just looking at the ordinance as it is written now for the variance. Any other comments? Well, I mean, the choices we have are if we feel that this meets the requirements of a, for a variance would be to approve the variance. We can also deny the variance if we feel that it is not up to the it's not up to our, you know, the requirements for a variance. Or if we feel that there's some additional information, we can ask for that or postpone if we need additional information.
So, Mr. Chairman, we're being asked to grant a variance even though the township board hasn't approved the special land use?
They have not. The, the planning commission has approved the site plan, so the, the planning commission is fine with the gravel driveway, but the planning commission does not have the power that the ZBA does to grant a variance from the that's not within their realm. So they, the planning commission has approved the site plan contingent upon the receiving this variance, so the planning commission does not have any issues with the gravel driveway or.
So again, the township board has not granted the special land use, but we're being asked to grant a variance before the township decides if they're in favor of it or not. Yes or no?
This applies to the site plan. So this, this, this doesn't apply to the special land use. This applies to their site plan. They have the approved site plan contingent upon receiving a variance which the planning commission cannot give for this driveway and the parking area. So this does not apply to the special land use, just their site plan.
So then if the board denies the special land use, the variance, if it was granted, is gone.
It would be moot. They would, they would have an approved site plan, but they would not have the ability to operate the special land use for their rescue, so.
Okay, I mean, just to be clear, what the procedures and what the issue is.
This is step two. The site plan was step one. This is step two and step three would be to get the approval for the special land use at the board, which the planning commission did recommend to the board.
Okay, just so you get an understanding of what's being asked and what's what.
This has been, yeah, this is a three hooper. They've got, like I said, they've got one down, but like I say, the site, the planning commission did review the, the application. The planner's gone through it. It's just that the planning commission does not have the ability to grant a variance for the gravel. But like I said, the planning commission planner have, do not have an issue with it and it's within the, you know, the powers of the ZBA to grant this variance. If we feel that it's a practical difficulty and it's unnecessary to pave this, you know, we can't fit into each of these little boxes, but we do have the ability to do that based on the ordinance if we feel that it's not necessary, so. You know, I, I believe an ordinance, I mean, a variance would be in order, so the planning commission has gone through it and reviewed it and has no issue with it and they're basically just, they're really asking the ZBA to grant a variance that they can't, that they can't provide.
To the site plan.
You say that was a request from the planning commission that the ZBA grant the variance?
The planning commission, yeah, had no issue with the gravel. They're fine with the gravel, but they can't.
It's a request from the planning commission that the ZBA grant the variance. So I thought you heard you say.
Yeah, they approved the site plan contingent on the variance, so yes, they're expecting.
I don't know if it would be, I don't know if request would be the proper word. It would be supports, maybe?
Well, that's why I'm trying to get an understanding who's asking what and.
Or would it be supports or recommends, you know?
It's not a request. It's that they, they've approved the site plan contingent upon this variance which they cannot give, so.
I think DJ was implying that the planning commission didn't see an issue with it, but it's not their authority to.
Sorry, I couldn't hear what Jim was saying because DJ was talking to Jim.
I probably shouldn't even speak on it because I wasn't at the meeting, but I, I think DJ was implying that the discussions held that the planning commission implied that the planning commission members, they don't have the authority to allow it, didn't seem to have an issue with gravel in their discussion. Would that be correct, DJ?
That's correct. They, they, they have approved the site plan as gravel. But they cannot approve, they cannot approve it with gravel. They have to have the ZBA grant a variance. So they have approved it based on us granting that variance, so they have no issues with the site plan. But they cannot, they cannot grant, they cannot grant it without this variance, so it's, the, the planning commission has granted, has approved it contingent upon this variance. So it's not a request, but they, they, they have no other option. They cannot approve it, the gravel, because it's in the ordinance and the planning, only the ZBA has the, the powers to grant a variance from the ZBA.
So if planning commission wanted it paved, they could have required that or denied it and it wouldn't even have come to ZBA, correct?
Yeah, so if the planning commission wanted it paved, they would not have approved it contingent upon this variance. They would, as a gravel, they would have, they would have required the pavement.
Understood.
No, the request was, was incorrect, but they expect that, you know, that's gonna stay gravel. Clear it up.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Not really, but it gives a false sense of direction, so.
So are you, at this point, DJ, are you looking for a motion or do you have a motion as far as wording prepared?
Well, if, if the motion is to, I do not have motion prepared, so. But the motion would be, from what I'm gathering, would be to approve a variance.
From the required paved driveway and parking lot from section six dot zero three subsection E.
Correct.
Of the amended township ordinance.
Oh, it was already.
And then we've.
So are, were you saying that because you're making that motion or you just asked?
No, you were asking how.
I have no issues making that motion. I just wanna make sure it's worded properly.
Six oh three, and I think it's, it's E.
Subsection E of the amended township zoning ordinances.
Okay.
Unless anybody has any objection with that.
Do we probably need a third, do we need the address in there and the?
Twenty-one eight fifty.
Twenty-one eight five zero McFaul.
And then we and then we usually have a reason in there why we're granting the variance. It could be something along the lines of because of the the.
Uniformity with the surrounding properties.
Yeah, and the you know, the planning commission approved of the approval of gravel. We just had, we just have to have some reason behind our, our variance. And if we, if we state that, what was your first one?
I was gonna say the uniformity with the surrounding properties.
To stay uniform with surrounding properties.
Would you say as recommended?
Yeah, we will say.
As approved.
Yeah, so the planning commission.
The approved site plan.
Approved. Per the, per the planning commission approved site plan. That cover.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we've got, that we, they're gonna approve the variance from the section six point oh three E of the amended township zoning ordinance for the rabbit rescue at two one eight five oh. Did I say that address right? Yep, Fall Road. To stay, what was the wording used? I think, I can't read my writing.
Uniform.
Uniform.
With the surrounding properties.
With the surrounding properties as I didn't wanna say recommended. And as the planning commission approved site plan. Just need a word in there to make sense. I've put as, as, I've had as per the planning commission approved site plan. So basically that's why we're here is because the planning commission has approved this with gravel and needs our variance in order for this to go through. Did you sort all that out as we were?
I hope so. Do you want me to read it?
Okay, so Kevin, you making the motion?
Well, let me have Michelle read it back first and then.
Okay, so I have motion to approve variance from the required paved driveway and parking lot from section six zero three subsection E of the amended township ordinance for Romeo Rabbit Rescue at two one eight five zero McFaul Road because of the uniformity of the surrounding properties and per the planning commission approved site plan.
This is to maintain the uniformity of.
To maintain.
Kevin, do you make, is that your motion?
Um, yeah, I'll go with it.
Okay. All right, do we have a second of that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion on the motion. This is gonna be to approve the variance from the pavement for the Romeo Rabbit Rescue to maintain the uniformity of the surrounding properties as per the planning commission approved site plan. Everybody clear on the motion? Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye, and I'd like to have included in the minutes that I felt the applicant didn't meet the requirements for the variance.
Okay, so we have a three to one and we need three, so the motion does carry, so. The variance, variance is granted. Okay. Let's see, where's my right page here? Oh, you didn't make it the right color, so I, okay. That's why I thought that was the last thing on the agenda. Okay, so at this, we have one last opportunity for public comments if they have anything that you'd like to. Don't all jump up at once. If not, it is now. What is it, eight twelve?
Eight thirteen.
Eight thirteen. Need a motion to adjourn this zoning board of appeals meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Jim?
I'll second.
Kevin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much for joining us. Have a good evening.